Mr. Abuskado.
Here.
Mr. Mizouni. Mr. Akhiri.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Here.
Mr. Gudon.
Here.
Mr. Vindola.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Kee.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the record, the South Organite, the Observer, Township Clerk, and spokesman in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. And next we are going to have the Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just like to welcome everybody tonight. I think we had a nice close for the school year, our graduation, and other end-of-year activities. That's not mine. And I definitely know that there's a reason why a lot of people are here tonight. And I think the Board is aware of that as well. And we've kind of ramped up our discussions at the same last week. A proposal was brought to the Board from me. I'll let her speak on it or speak for herself. So basically, at this point, what we're going to do in terms of the Cross Program, and we're talking for spring 2020, is to basically evaluate everything that's needed. If they can hear it, I am definitely in favor of recommending that to the Board. I don't want to speak directly for each Board member. I think I can say that all Board members, from my experience with them, are in support of opportunities for children, students, whether it's their kids or other kids. I obviously feel the same way. So basically, because there's a lot of details that go into moving forward with a program like this, I am going to do my best to get that information as soon as possible, to be able to make a recommendation which would put, basically, make it solid and concrete. I can't say with 100% certainty, and I know that's going to upset some people, but I think, I feel very positive about it. And I don't want to, I understand some people are waiting based on timelines and whether or not, you know, the decision is going to be made to potentially come to a school or not, but I can tell you that we will update you as quickly as possible in the office all summer. And, you know, we also have to make sure budgetarily, transportation, personnel, equipment, that we are able to afford that. But I can say again, I think everybody's in favor of opportunities for children. And I'm sure there's going to be specific questions. I'd be happy to answer as much as I can, but again, this is something that's really risen to a level very recently because there is so much interest, and that is part of the reason why we're raising our interest level as well. So I guess I'll leave it at that right now and go on to Mr. Reedy's report.
Mr. Reedy. Good evening, all. There were two parts to my report. The first is just the financial report. The district is doing very well. Coming back, getting hold, promises being made. We closed the books as of June 30th. The ordinance, they, through our business administrator, they requested we come in first before they give their other clients, so we have everything resolved. No more numbers proceeding into the next school year. There's a lot of planning, a lot of things going on with Lynn Hurst. The biggest project coming up is the new middle school. One's been given to us that building will be finished in the springtime. And so we, the district has been taking many steps to make sure that by September of '21, the building will officially open. It will be manned and ready to go. Searching for the building principal. Curriculum is being reviewed. Studies in progress, and a plan to make sure how many, if we have sufficient teachers. The elementary schools will be reorganized. There's a lot going on when it gets a little faster to be finalized. I'm sure the Board will be able to inform everybody. With respect to the Cross, I am firmly believing that kids come first. If you have a program that's going to allow kids to play sports, something that they want, something that they enjoy, something that they're enthusiastic about, then I might hopefully support. The Board also feels this way, and I don't want to be too individual, Board owner, but you will give your comments. We know a board resolution is signed today to create the program because we don't have enough information. I see my audience, that there is a great response, and I want to build on it. But some of the difficulties that we have, that we have to establish before we told you that, it's one league, it's all doable items, doable information, everything obtained, though we just don't have it right now. We must have that before we do it. Looking at this as being a pilot program, to establish the viability of having a Cross team, and to be vulnerable, and to do the right thing. Mr. Donovan, trustee, who's our point person giving us the information. I'm putting a cap on how much money we can have, the Board, we put into this pilot program. And everybody seems to be on, from the Board side, on the same page to try our best to have the program operational in the springtime. But we just don't have that concrete information that the state needs to say yes to that. But we can say yes to that, but we're trying to get this out. And if I have any additional questions, you can talk to the Superintendent or myself at another time. Thank you.
May I please have a motion for approval of the minutes of May 20, 2019?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Okay, next we are going to have a panel hearing for the meeting on the agenda. Hi, Lynn, come on up. I wondered where you've been. I don't know why you just came. I was here because someone had a question. You need to answer that. We talked about the new school. Does the state have to approve the fact that you're switching it from a 79 to a 678 while it's being built? Or has it been approved by the state? It's been approved. Does the town vote to approve?
Yes.
Really? Okay. So they told me they just built the building. So my question is, are they going to specify codes in which a 678 for just switching is going to be able to be opened or approved to be used for children? And it only has one entrance in and out. I don't know if you can imagine emergency entrance or withdrawal. So have you kids going into a school that's one way in and one way out? Is that according to the statute of state?
My understanding is two for one. As far as it is, as the fire code and the building is approved totally, we want to hold fire code and holding your code. With regard to the educational, now, 678 is easier to approve as opposed to 79. So...
Is there a difference in the square footage then for the school for 79 or is it out of 678 into so many classrooms?
All required to the code, both the educational code and the building code.
Now, has the state come off and checked the school's way of change once in the process of being built?
They have, yes.
They have. And everything is just that situation?
And then will be, and then will be a final inspection before the school, when the school can take over the program.
Now, have you had your needles with the town to make sure everything? Because I heard the school's going to be done by December.
They're not too far off.
Okay, and they also said that the school may be responsible for harnessing it. If they're going to do certain things, we're not going to do anything. And so, too, we have to put that into the budget for next year to accommodate whatever you're going to do, furniture, or I don't know.
I know, I know. Your information is incorrect. I don't know what it's totally.
It's on tape in the list. More information for you.
I'm just telling you. And Superintendent, this is taken from our furniture. I have, basically, it's all here. Accommodated entirely by the town in furniture. They sent us samples, and we picked what we wanted, and it's been done.
Then you should just be aware of the underlying form of those appointments in the meeting. They want to be planned for.
Is furniture in yet?
I don't know if it's in yet, but we've pretty much finalized it. Friends, town, it's a way of it.
They're going to do some things, but they're not doing all of it. I mean, it's easy to communicate with one another.
So we're obviously engaged in terms of what we've looked at so far, desks, mat tables, newer types of desks and tables. So that's, that's as far as that goes. That's what we've done so far. Some of the stuff, by the way.
I'd hate to see if the building was built and then all of a sudden it comes in. It's a, on the original classroom, you could maybe move the plans from 79 and make the building smaller. They reduced the six classrooms. So, and I know the code according to the state, it has to have so many classrooms, so many this and that. I'm just hoping that, you know, like what they're building and what's on the plans is what's going on.
We have been in close communication with them because we have to then, what we're happily doing this now is to set up scheduling, curriculum, and the teaching group we need, we're doing the whole.
Okay, on page four, you have, on the agenda, your construction services should pay $13,000 or $42,000. What was that for? On the referendum. Because, by the way, is the referendum complete? Do you still have more construction you have to do that was building on a couple years ago? Or is anything left out? So I was just verifying with the business administrator. That is for DeCaro and Vino, and they're the ones, two meetings ago, who did the presentation of the referendum, the older buildings. And so that is a toss of them with the plans and whatnot for the referendum. So that's for consulting services, for construction.
Rather than, I see what your point is. But yes.
It's the consultant, not the actual building that you booked.
It's not for actual buildings, but it is for plans.
And buildings. Now, have you finished the referendum? The building of what the referendum was about a couple years ago? Have you completed all the construction?
No, absolutely not. Again, two meetings ago, there was a presentation on how it's being reconfigured with regards to how we can move forward and taking in consideration the change of the middle school. How it was once a junior high, uh, junior, yeah, junior high, and how those schools were being put and built in terms of looking towards it that way. Things had to be reconfigured because now it's a middle school from six to eight.
I understand that. That's why we want them to do a 678, the state just said, but have you not completed anything that would be, would have been on the referendum?
We did, well, there are. We completed the high school aspect, the first phase of the high school of that referendum.
Was that air conditioning in the high school that everybody thought you would put the air conditioning in the high school? And now I understand it was under various, and it's not going to be done.
Air conditioning is not going to be done at this time.
Okay, so that was originally on the referendum?
No, it was not. It was never on the referendum.
Part of it was on. Nothing was air conditioned?
No.
Well, no more. Next time you do a referendum.
The classrooms should have renovated in phase one of the referendum. Those are air conditionings, like air conditioning and the media center. But the air conditionings in the high school in general, that was not ever there.
Okay, I suggest next time if you do a referendum, you put various, I think you should be listening with the various citizens and people. Because everybody gives them the impression that it's a high school with air conditioning.
I think there were a lot of things that we could have done differently together with that, and I think maybe we learned our lesson.
Yeah. So I think you realize that we need more communication with the people. Okay, on page 14, you're doing a roof in a high school. What part of this high school do you believe is considering?
That's the gym.
That's the gym, and how old is the roof that you wanted to replace?
14, 15 years.
So when you do this, is it a 10-year roof, 10-year roof? Will you put it off?
It's a warranty.
It's a 30-year roof. Okay, so was the one that they did was a 10-year roof or was it a 10-year roof?
10.
That has to be explicit to on the, I'm assuming, so that people know, like, I have space and I'm paying for things over and over and over. And I was on the board because it was here. I'm a board of 10 years. So then I remember doing it on the high school. So it has to be valid, so it's not fair. Okay, and they did do it in the high school.
Not in gym.
Or they did something, or maybe they didn't even do it.
No, because you're on 10 years.
Yeah, and they did it all on the high school.
But I think in general, it's saying that if we're putting on a new roof to indicate how long that roof, what we're buying, I understand what you're saying.
I understand. Correct. Okay, on builders, I see there's a Tomco and Tomco Associates for $790. Who's the Tomco and Tomco Associate?
They're a consulting firm, and they hired them previously in the fall for consultation with regards to our policies. And this is with regards to the middle school and the transition into the new middle school.
Okay, and is Tomco, is that any kind of relationship to the superintendent of Bellville?
Yes.
Is it his company?
Yes.
So he, it's his actual company that they're using, and you're still with Bellville, right? Or you're still supervising Bellville on the state monitor?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Are you still in Bellville also as a state monitor?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to verify. My next question about the non-agenda, the parts of Board. Okay, the next person is, is Joanne Durlin. Okay, my question is, on the new business, page 13, the first point, if you resolve what education could the parent professional salary rise as attached to the program? I don't, I have no attachment. The job is attached. How are the professional guys? Okay. And while working, while joining, is it hard to sustain, like, the lunch package in the lunch days of not getting increased again for the fourth year after you're not told four years ago for a certificate and give an interest? Is that true? Governor Burden signed the bill for $15 now, or is it still 75 now, which is disgusting? This is what you want.
I'm not worried in cash, but I'm not, there's not a raised budget. There hasn't been budget.
Yes.
There has, there has not been a raised budget for what she is.
I was, I'm not, this is, I'm not, I'm voting for this to this. They're going to work on the burden. These people got lost 24 years ago. They got nothing. They got absolutely nothing. They got nothing of interest. And if Governor Burden signed it for $15 now, what is he going to pitch up?
Do you, don't buy Governor Burden's case in.
It is.
So it's being accounted for, I know, but...
But I'm sure it's not. I mean, 10 years now, yes, that's useless. But what do you have, do you have a question?
I don't have an attachment.
Okay, I'm looking at this. This is nothing different than before. It is not even this. It is exactly what the parent professional got salary rise was when I did it for the last year.
But it is, it is the same right now. There's some, there's some minor changes with added district gates. There's also changes with a step for ADA classrooms, for older classrooms as well.
No, maybe that, that people also, as I said.
But it wasn't memorialized the last one. It's not memorialized the last one. There were some questions about as the students got older and went into a higher level of that standard as well. And the amount of these statistics, I think, has been confirmed. That's, those are the three things that are memorializing. There's three major differences.
And we've been in 10 sick days last year. We didn't use them. That did happen.
So they're all, and they're following.
So if I didn't use them, I had 20 sick days starting to go.
Correct. We're, we're very well aware of things that, you know, we want to catch up, and we're doing our best. I know we're going to be, trust me, we have a major, so we will. Those are things that are all on the Board's radar, and in defense of individual Board members, and the Boards of the Hall, it has come up a lot, and we know that we need to address it, and we're very well, we value people.
Under Finance, any Board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Finance Committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions being contained. Hearing none, make a motion that 1 through 23 be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Before I read my items on the agenda, I would like to just go over and acknowledge the people involved with the high school musical, the elementary school musical, which would be the middle school musical, the district concerts, high school and middle school, and the fourth, fifth, and fourth and fifth grade concerts. I was, had the privilege of attending most of them, and I'm very impressed by the amount of students involved in our music program and in our fine arts department, as well as bar art shows. And our, we also had a cabaret night at the high school. Our students are multi-talented, and if any of you ever have the pleasure of attending, you will see how much talent we have in our schools. It's a credit to our teachers, it's a credit to our parents, and it's mostly credit to the children who are above and beyond. Lynn Hurst has much talent. Thank you, all. Any Board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education and Curriculum Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that 1 and 2 be accepted as read.
Second. Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Policies, rules, regulations. Any Board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Policies, Rules, and Regulations, may make do so now. And a separate motion for each accepted action will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to accept 1 through 4.
Second.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Any Board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Community Relations and Safety and Security Committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve items 1 through 6.
Second.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
Four.
Any Board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Athletics and Student Activities Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to accept 1 through 4.
Second.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Akhiri.
Four.
Mr. Anjanopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Four.
Mr. Gudon.
Four.
Mr. Vindola.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Kee.
New business, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of New Business may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to approve items number one through four on the agenda, plus item number five on agenda number one. Sorry.
Mr. Abuskado, four. Ms. Akiri, four. Ms. Regenopoulos, four. Mr. Ferandino, four. Mr. Bruno, four. Mr. Vindola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee.
I'm rusty, because I've been done one of these in about four and a half years. So, um, any board, this is Personnel Committee, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. And of all motions, I have to reduce myself, uh, with number thirteen. So I make a motion that, um, we adopt one through twelve, and, um, we're gonna do fourteen, fourteen through twenty-six, and then it's agenda number one that has, uh, uh, motion twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine on.
Second.
All right, so one through twelve.
One through twelve, and then thirteen through twenty-nine. Um, and Susan has seconded, so vote on.
Mr. Abuskado, standing. Ms. Akiri, four. Ms. Regenopoulos, four. Mr. Ferandino, four. Mr. Bruno, four. Mr. Vindola, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee.
Now I make a motion that we adopt, uh, fourteen through twenty-nine. All right, so I make a motion to adopt number thirteen.
Second.
Mr. Abuskado, standing. Ms. Akiri, four. Ms. Regenopoulos, four. Mr. Ferandino, four. Mr. Bruno, four. Mr. Vindola. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Kee.
Okay, next we are on non-agenda items. In Missalina Stella. If you go to the phone and you know where the four point four rule is.
Yes, can you repeat the question, please?
Um, the short four point four rule in our budget, so we're here before for that, which we found out what happened to four point four rule to put it in the particular.
Uh, yes and no. It'd be, it's not that I found out, but the board members can, uh, the district orders, the new district orders can, and they documented all the expenditures, and the total expenditures exceeded what they need, but four point four, and the state then advanced along to take care of that. No, uh, with regards to examination or warning, uh, of that, or further warning of that school year, that, that's everybody, uh, right. So, uh, that information, uh, from the state's orders falling into that section, uh, may have, so have been, have been.
They haven't completed the parts of order yet.
I don't, I don't even know if they started it.
Okay, but meantime, you're, you're born, uh, from the state, so the whole, we're in the black hole.
Yes.
And now you just gotta figure out what happened to the money and so on and so forth.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be a different section in the state now.
Okay.
How long is that?
I, uh, just, it, it, I honestly, uh, when the, uh, when the young male had the year shortfall, it took, it took over eighteen months before we were aside.
There's one question I was thinking about. If the somebody said they knew that your godmother, whatever gave you the name, sure, wouldn't it be nice if they were putting on a refund in November, giving you extra money? Like, if you went over the budget, your budget, law is you have to put it on a referender in November for the election, because you don't have a people election. You don't owe for a budget unless you're gonna go over the budget, it has to, amount of money has to be put in November, correct?
Basically, yes.
Okay, so if they were running into trouble, the board would, would, why didn't they do something like that to avoid being in the shortfall? Could they have done it?
Could they have done it, yes. I can't answer those questions, but I listen to you. Two, uh, the question is, uh, the board members that we hear can't document.
No, no, most of them, some of them.
No, even once they're heated, you know, how if they were willing to offer?
Uh-huh, that's true.
So, and that's what, for, 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 for that.
All right, so if I should not be here, if you do that, if you like water and salmon or, uh, sometimes I can't make it full time, that would come with, you know, I need information. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Nate Verata?
Good evening, I'm Nate Verata, I'm going into the South of Cleveland, I'm here to speak about high school.
Nate, Nate, okay. You know, I like to phone to all the people here.
I'm depending on costs, it's going to vary. The cost has become my greatest worry. The means is what I want to play in this school, because I feel like it's more of a risk. Can you kind of go ahead and explain here? At the end of the year, I'm going to start first with the interview. Schools should ask for because it is hard for them to focus. They may not have a lot of the resources to talk to us. Sports is hard, sports have taught me, as sports, the way I can't do anything with, but sports have taught me. The cost of being a basketball player, because it's physical like the video. My team needs to provide a daily ownership, and they just keep having to run for a long time, and we were able to make them. A high school across to you, if there was a chance, a chance to keep getting better in the game, I hope people can start their career, so that can, that can, that can stay focused and follow up as we prepare.
Megan Darata?
I. Hi, I just need a minute, that was my son. I have four kids in the school system right now, he's my oldest, twenty-seven. I have one going into fourth grade at Roosevelt. I have one going into second grade at Landen. And my daughter's going to start kindergarten in twenty-twenty. So, um, I also have been working for the Jersey City school system for the past nineteen years, um, as a teacher, and for the past, I've been a master teacher for the early childhood department. I believe in public education. So it broke my heart when my son came to me a couple months ago and said, "I can't go to Lynn Hurst baseball." Um, and I said, "Why?" And he said, "Because I, I need to play lacrosse, and we don't have lacrosse there." Um, that's heartbreaking for me, because I want him here, I believe in the system. There's so many benefits, and I know you all spoke briefly about believing in opportunities. Where I work, kids don't have the opportunities that, that we have here, and I see what these do. So the more opportunities you give them, the more likely it is that there's still one of the tech, which is what we need. Um, also, in terms of keeping kids in Lynn Hurst, we want to keep our students here. More kids is more funding. We want them here. So if we're not offering them what they want, what they need, they're gonna find it elsewhere, and we don't need that. It's also gonna provide more opportunities for scholarships. Uh, that's gonna boost that, those ratings on those websites that people love to go to when they're deciding whether this is a good school system or not, right? Great schools that work, that's one of the things they look at. Not that I necessarily believe in that, but once again, we want to keep kids here. Um, in terms of negatives, I don't see any, I know you guys have to look at the budget, but to me, we're definitely pretty, and we're getting way more out of it. Um, in terms of competition with other sports, because I do hear that in communities sometimes, I can tell you one thing, my child, I, I just go, "He's not playing baseball." It's not happening. He's played at two thousand, he's not fast enough, he's not physical enough. We need the kid like him to have something to do as well. Um, at the end of the day, this is about the community, it's about our kids, um, and giving them whatever it is that they need to succeed. Um, thank you for your time.
Amy T. Twol.
Good evening, I graduated from Lynn Hurst, twenty-four years. Um, I'm here as a mama bear. I have three sons, that one is graduating, he's in stocks and playing baseball because of his district. Another who's a senior, who plays football, bowling, and baseball, and my husband politically come from a baseball family. Mine, of his son, at the age of five, picks up a lacrosse stick with Coach Kim, only wanted to swing something, not a bat. And he swung that stick from the age of five. He is our bowling, we were undefeated until, I'm sorry, the very end. We are known throughout this state for wrecked lacrosse, not private lacrosse, not lacrosse clubs, wrecked lacrosse because of that man and these children. They are dedicated, they are hardworking, and the mama bear, all of us, and, I'm sorry, you know, Papa Bear's toes, we'll come out. They are dedicated, we are hardworking, we will not let you down. I, again, I graduated from this school, my two children, I don't want to send my third product so he can continue to dream of lacrosse bowling. I want him here. I am a mama bear, I cook those football dinners, I am at the bowling tournaments, I am at those baseball games. I want to be on the lacrosse field screaming, "Let's go, Mikey Finn, let's go Bears." So, people aren't gonna like me, my taxes go up, what else is new? I want to go to Lynn Hurst, thank you.
Colin Kittredge.
Hello, my name is Colin Kittredge, I'm only in my senior year here at this high school. I play volleyball, and I love track, and I started lacrosse in the fifth grade, and I played all the way up to the part of the freshman year, I mean, I tried to play in my team, in the freshman, but, um, I'd love to see a lacrosse program my senior year, because I know there are a lot of guys in my track team alone that would love to play lacrosse, and, yeah, I like the progress that I see me made, and people discussing it and stuff, and, yeah, I agree, I have the opportunity for the younger kids, as well as myself and my friends, to have a lacrosse program next year and in the future.
Chris Lethner? I'm not saying that right. Chris Calton, I can't tell if it's an L or a C is the last name. Sean Sweeney.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sean Sweeney, uh, longtime, late time Lynn Hurst citizen. Uh, I have the unique experience of every university in the world, and I moved back here in Lynn Hurst, I probably live anywhere in the world, but I come back to this fine town. Lacrosse has been in my family for the last six years, through the coach Kim, my son plays in, uh, also in a club team up in Ridgewood, uh, because he just loves his sport, uh, you can't get the stick out of his hand, and if you were trying to count far as to have it, there's a giant net in my backyard. Uh, we haven't broken any windows yet allegedly, but for the, some time. Uh, what I'm here today is to really just express with financial, you know, uh, we're gonna start a Golden Bears Lacrosse Booster Club, we think we can raise ten to twenty, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, we'll have an event, uh, we'll do it as a five oh one C, uh, five oh one C rate. I've already done a similar thing, I was on it for a friend of mine, had passed away. One dinner is very simple, very easy to raise, uh, I think we can use that money to offset the, uh, the, the cost, uh, and we'd really like to work with you guys, this isn't just a one-way street, visit Dr. O'Leary, community here in Lynn Hurst, so, uh, you know, we're here for you tonight to show our support, and so here, there for us in the end, and we'll raise the money to help you guys get this program going, thank you.
Cory Slidon?
Hi, uh, my name is Cory Slidon, I'm a big coach, I've been with you for three years, I coached everyone for three years. Actually started without the COVID, uh, I had a hit program, I did it for ten years, and got to high school, and all sorts of plays I get, like, he and Carla, I just paid eight thousand dollars, and they had, they had ten thousand, yeah, cheesecake, sadly, they paid thirty thousand, so it's not a money issue. So again, I'm an outsider, um, the enthusiasm between the players and coaches and the parents is, is really outstanding, I didn't see it in nothing at all. Uh, it's very important at the high school to have the same page of the youth program. If somebody made a comment about track, I, I grew up on a mound, played lacrosse on a mound at the beginning of college, my, my high school team beat our track team in all the races, they beat the football team and stuff like that, though, I think if we had a week or so of practice, we probably would have, would have been better than that. So, lacrosse is a vast, it's a great sport in the country, uh, New Jersey, I think, has four division one players than any other state around. Uh, you know, colleges, it's everyone, but over the years, I've had so many parents wanting to say, "Not for college," I think it would be going, you know, get out of lacrosse, I think it would be going to college, so if I say, uh, it's coming, coming sport, I really hope that I, that.
Thank you, everyone, for coming up.
Again, I just wanna, um, reiterate, um, I appreciate everybody's passion for it, and I can assure you that if I said that I can only speak for myself, um, like, I, I, I can speak for the board as well, in, in certain ways, I can speak for myself in saying that if I say that I'm the one to look into it, and do my best to, um, get a recommendation going as soon as possible, I'm the one to. Um, I appreciate our students that spoke, um, Colin, Derek Smith, this one, all the last team that was in the, in the, in my peers, um, Nate, I also had focus issues in school, so we spoke too, um, so I'm with them, we're good, um, and, and the moms and dads and outsiders, you know, obviously, you spoke very clearly, and we understand what you want, and, yes. So, at least not for the majority of that, we will, um, at least I can hopefully send an update very soon, um, because right now, our next goal for working is not to be in August, so, um, I'll discuss with the board how we want to move forward in communicating, um, if we want to look into doing it in the fall next year, in terms of communicating information. if we want, again, to do it in the fall next meeting in terms of communicating information. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, before we end tonight, I just want to say at our last meeting, we had mentioned that we were going to be honoring our crossing guards, and being that school has already ended, I think it would be best that we will take the time at, we're looking at our August or September meeting to be able to honor them for the wonderful work that they do. So, thank you, everybody. It was really nice to see all the lacrosse families here. Don't lie, I'm speaking to them. And Joanne, thank you for being consistent, continuing to speak up for the aides. We appreciate it.
Do I say what I want to do?
Absolutely, go ahead.
You flew this out to me now, she wasn't there.
Correct.
And I went out and I dropped my bag, she wasn't there, so I didn't get to talk to her. Then what? Now, why am I going to forty-seven point five dollars, twenty-nine point five dollars? You don't need to pay. That's how it works. Right here, work scattered. Is that student required for the forty-seven point five dollars? We need to include. The work needs scattered, and does not allow only four dollars? Twenty-nine point five dollars?
If that was required, if that's the number, that's what's being required.
Doctor?
Sure, I have to look at people's eyes.
I have, right?
No, it's fine. No, no, we have to look at people's eyes.
I currently work in the ADA classroom, and I was told that the ADA, pre-teen disabled, the only one ever had two thousand dollars spent. Now, I don't understand why this case is here, it's saying that for our freshmen, the ADA preschools tables, we need forty-two classes to pay two thousand dollars. Is something new?
An additional two.
So, starting this year, I'll pay two thousand dollars increase in my cost? Because I can still give in the ADA, how are those... I'm in boarding.
Yes, 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 that's additional, yes.
Okay. Also, sick days. Teachers get three sick days. They have three sick days, after the third sick day, you have to bring it out. Why is it that the aides have to bring it out, and not get the two sick days? And we have no personal aid, and it's free. You could not do a personal...
What's on?
If the teacher has three days, and then he's not...
Three days.
Why are you making us have the two days to bring it out?
It's something that we can explore, but that's what we were advised to do based on the information that we received. But I think the fact that we're rolling over is positive and confirming that, that they're being rolled over from the idiot.
I don't think I'd want to go further than I did just one year ago. According to the governor, it's three days, and that's going to be...
Scotty, you want to speak on that? Because that makes the guidance that you...
I disagree.
Okay.
I'm at ours.
The one that was in the record, or Jersey.com?
Actually, we believe that I'm going to take more of the ten sick days that's in the Lynn Hurst...
No, no, I think...
But in a certain way, what we have to do is turn four days into six days, and just give ten sick days, and that's it. And then it's two hours.
Yeah, we have to clarify the hours, so I think that's a mistake.
And is that on here, there's lives, more than...
There was no intention of changing the hours without anybody knowing, so I can assure you that if there was... I'll make sure we follow.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the meeting, and I have a motion, please. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.